Buenas tardes a todos. Gracias por estar aquí. Hoy es el 3 de febrero de 2020 y el Comité del Consejo de la Ciudad de Seattle, el completo comité del consejo, se dirigirá a orden. Son 2:05 p.m. y soy Teresa Mosqueta, la presidenta pro teme de hoy. Gracias a todos por acompañarnos. Tenemos una casa empilada aquí y tenemos una casa empilada abajo también. Como es verdad en el pasado, hemos permitido muchos signos, como pueden ver en la audiencia. Si tienes un signo grande, pero estamos pidiendo que los gente se lo mantenga, como puedo ver qué dicen las letras, o si quieres, eres autorizado a sentarse al back y mantener tu signo, pero no podemos tenerlos sentados en el camino de las cámaras. Así que aprecio que escuchen a los que mencionaron eso antes, pero solo quería mencionar eso para cualquiera que esté abajo o para cualquiera que venga ahora. Por eso estamos pidiendo que los gente mantiene sus signos un poco bajo. Si quieres mantenerlos, por favor, ve al back para que puedan mantenerse ahí atrás. Muchas gracias. Vamos a empezar nuestra presentación hoy después de que se inicien las llamadas de palabra aquí. Antes de empezar con las llamadas de palabra, me gustaría que el fiscal haga la llamada de palabra y luego me excusaré del miembro del consejo Juárez.
Peterson.
Aquí.
Sawat.
Aquí.
Strauss. Juárez. Lewis.
Aquí.
Morales.
Aquí.
Presidente del Consejo, Pro Tem Mosqueta.
Aquí.
Cinco presentes.
Gracias. Si no hay objeción, el miembro del consejo Juárez será excuso de la reunión del consejo de hoy. No hay objeción. El miembro del consejo Juárez es excuso. En cuanto a las presentaciones, el siguiente item de nuestra agenda, no estoy consciente de ninguna presentación hoy. Genial. Viendo que ninguna, avanzaremos. Los minutos del 21 de julio y 27 de 2020 del Consejo de la Ciudad han sido presentados y revisados. No sé qué dije, pero los minutos del 21 de enero y 27 de enero de 2020 del Consejo de la Ciudad han sido revisados. Si no hay objeción a estos minutos, serán firmados. No hay objeción. Los minutos van a ser firmados. Si no hay objeción a la calendaria de introducción y refuerzo, el calendario será adoptado. No hay objeción, la calendaria de introducción y refuerzo es adoptada. Si no hay objeción a la agenda, la agenda de hoy será adoptada. No hay objeción a la agenda, la agenda es adoptada. A este tiempo, estamos emocionados de recibir a todos aquellos que han venido para publicar comentarios. Vamos a asegurarnos de mantener los comentarios relevantes a cualquier cosa que esté en la agenda del consejo de hoy o nuestra calendaria de introducción y refuerzo. Estoy segura de que muchos de ustedes ya han revisado nuestro corto calendario de hoy, así que sé que sus temas estarán en punto. Dado el gran número de personas que están aquí, vamos a limitar las presentaciones del consejo a una minuta para individuos y dos minutos para grupos. Apprecito que los gente permanezca dentro de ese plazo. Tenemos más de 100 personas ya firmadas para testificar y mi esperanza es que podamos pasar por todos. Tomaremos una pausa a 20 minutos para que podamos potencialmente considerar extender la agenda para tratar de acomodar lo más posible a tantos gente para que hablen. También notaré que sé que esto ha aparecido en la agenda del consejo varias veces antes. Han habido dos oportunidades para testificar públicamente, la primera teniendo un plazo de 30 minutos, la segunda teniendo un plazo de una hora y 20 minutos. Así que aprecio que limiten sus comentarios a una minuta por individuo y dos minutos por grupo. Y como ya han dicho, gracias por traer tus signos grandes al back. Cuando los gente está hablando, por favor, no mantengas tus signos demasiado altos para que la gente en la audiencia y las cámaras puedan seguir viendo. Aretha leerá el registro, los nombres de los gente que están aquí para testificar y aseguraremos de leer tres nombres a la vez. Mientras leemos tres nombres, por favor, lineen tres a la vez a cada micrófono para que podamos mantener esto en marcha rápidamente y para que podamos escuchar a lo más posible de personas. Notaré que no permitimos el boing. No quiero escuchar el boing aquí. Sé que hay muchas personas aquí que quieren apoyar lo que otras personas tienen que decir. Si quieres mostrar signos de apoyo, esto va a ser bienvenido y eso también nos mantendrá adelante para que no tengamos que parar por aplausos. Así que, de nuevo, esto sería bienvenido para cualquier aplauso, pero realmente voy a desalentar el boing. Con eso, quiero asegurarme de que los gente tengan la oportunidad de subir al micrófono, dado que tenemos algunas personas abajo. Y antes de hacerlo, según nuestra costumbre, siempre tenemos a funcionarios electos que tienen la oportunidad de venir primero. Así que con eso, me gustaría recibir al miembro del consejo de la ciudad de Redmond, Varishka Khan. ¿Tenemos al miembro del consejo Khan en la audiencia? Bien, genial. Gracias. Vamos adelante. Y mientras ella se acerca al micrófono, Aretha, ¿puede usted, por favor, leer el registro de los primeros tres personas que hablarán después de ella?
Los primeros tres nombres son Padma, Ram y Shampad.
Genial. Bienvenida. Gracias, miembro del consejo, por estar aquí. ¿Y este individuo está con usted?
No.
Bien. Solo como recordatorio, no vamos a tener que levantar los pies al lado de cualquiera que esté testificando que no está ahí como grupo. Bien, vámonos.
Gracias por la oportunidad. Como mencionó, mi nombre es Varisha Khan. Soy miembro del Consejo de la Ciudad en la ciudad de Redmond y quiero hablar en apoyo de la resolución de hoy. Creo que es un testimonio importante y una declaración para la comunidad que vive en la ciudad de Seattle, así como en la región más amplia. Vengo de la ciudad de Redmond, que es ahora...
Lo siento, miembro del consejo. Ya he dicho que no vamos a tener signos en ambos lados. Bien, así que para los que están esperando su turno, ustedes son bienvenidos a levantar y esperar en fila detrás, pero ustedes necesitan, todo el mundo necesita dejar sus signos porque ustedes no...
Incluyendo al señor allí.
Ustedes no están en un grupo. Gracias.
Estoy en la fila.
Ustedes sí, señor, pero gracias por esperar y dejar su signo. Lo aprecio. Bien, así que si su nombre no es llamado, no quiero que esté sentado detrás de la persona testificando. Miembro del consejo, lo siento por la interrupción. Por favor, continúe.
Gracias de nuevo por la oportunidad. Vengo de la ciudad de Redmond, que es una ciudad de mayor y minoría, y con una gran comunidad asiática sur, estamos directamente afectados por la resolución que se presenta hoy. Vengo de la comunidad musulmana yo misma, vivimos el más grande mosque de la región, la Asociación Musulmana de Puget Sound. Y como comunidad, actualmente estamos enfrentando una necesidad de defensa contra crímenes de odio, contra discriminación localmente aquí en nuestra región. Pero lo que enfrentamos no es una isla de la geopolítica del mundo en el que vivimos. Dado el hecho de que como una gran comunidad minoritaria o una gran comunidad asiática sur, tenemos directamente a individuos con familiares y gente que no necesariamente son ciudadanos de Estados Unidos todavía, pero que requieren volver a casa, hay una absoluta y importante necesidad de una resolución para apoyar a los miembros de la comunidad que están afectados por la islamofobia del proyecto de la CAA de India. Como miembro de la comunidad musulmana de la ciudad de Redmond, puedo asumir el hecho de que esa retórica ya nos ha afectado aquí, localmente en nuestra región. Los miembros de la comunidad musulmana de la comunidad se sienten inseguros debido al lenguaje que se está propagando, debido al odio, debido a la intolerancia que se está perpetuindo. Y así que le pido y le exijo a este consejo que stand en solidaridad con una comunidad ya atacada. Hace poco, justo como ayer, vimos una expansión de nuestra prohibición de viajes musulmanes. Y esta resolución, de hecho, es una declaración contra lo que está pasando a nivel nacional, a nivel geopolítico, y stand en solidaridad con la comunidad aquí. Así que le exijo que, por favor, aprobé esta resolución hoy. Gracias.
Miembro del consejo, gracias por estar aquí. Aretha, ¿puede usted, por favor, leer el registro, los tres nombres que ya mencionó y los tres nombres que seguirán?
El siguiente nombre es Ram, después es Shampad, luego, siguiendo a Ram y Shampad, serán Atul, Archana Sunil, Michael Parker y Padma Ayala.
Genial. Padma, bienvenida.
Ella estaba antes de mí.
Oh.
¿Deberían venir?
Sí, Padma.
Ella fue primero en la lista.
Padma, lo siento.
Gracias. Buenas tardes a todos. Mi nombre es Padma. Estoy hablando como un grupo aquí. Amo Seattle. Hice mi máster, trabajé en Seattle y pagamos impuestos a la ciudad. Strongemente opongo la resolución de la CAA, 31926. Es totalmente injusto, irrelevante y opone los derechos humanos básicos. Estoy aquí para compartir mi experiencia sobre los derechos humanos básicos que fueron violados en un vuelo de PIA en el lanzamiento de transitar en el aeropuerto internacional de Karachi. Algunos años atrás, mi esposo y yo volamos de Arabia Saudita a Bombay debido a una emergencia familiar. Tuvimos que tomar los aerolíneas disponibles inmediatos y entraron en esta situación totalmente discriminada. Nuestra experiencia horrible comenzó cuando boarding el vuelo de PIA y finalmente terminó solo después de boarding el vuelo de Air India a Bombay. Nuestros sentimientos fueron terriblemente heridos. Estábamos insultados en muchas situaciones. El personal exhibió desprecio, mostró absoluto odio de todos modos que pudieron. Éramos los únicos dos indios en el vuelo y estuvimos en un estado de miedo solo porque éramos hindus y vegetarianos. Se nos negó el almuerzo vegetariano requerido, se nos dijo rudimentadamente que no existe tal cosa y puede ofrecer solo comida sin vegetación. Con los asistentes, los asistentes del vuelo amaban conversar sarcásticamente, a menudo insultando valores, tradiciones y formas de adorar a los hindus. Incluso en el lanzamiento de transitar, cuando pedimos comida vegetariana, la respuesta fue solo un día, está bien comer carne. Tenemos carne en la ensalada también. Fue un total display de pure animosidad hacia los hindus, hacia el vegetarianismo y porque continuamos nuestra fe en no comer la comida ofrecida. Habiendo enfrentado esta situación horribliza, uno puede muy bien imaginar el tipo de brutalidad y terror que estos 37,000 personas minoritarias habrían pasado por cada día de su vida en todos estos tres países islámicos, Pakistán, Afganistán y Bangladesh. Mi conclusión aquí es que el gobierno indio está ofreciendo a estas minorías que merecen el derecho básico de vivir. Strongemente recomiendo a la señora Savant a apoyar a la CAA y a la NRC. Hagan lo mejor que se necesita para Seattle y Estados Unidos. Gracias y Dios bendiga a América.
Gracias, Padma. Y los micrófonos deben, los micrófonos serán apagados al final del periodo y realmente aprecio a los que están haciendo esto como una muestra de solidaridad para mantenernos adelante. De nuevo, esto al final, si lo apoya y eso nos mantendrá adelante. Bienvenida y gracias por esperar. Ram.
Gracias. Soy parte de un grupo, así que estoy hablando para tres personas. Así que buenas tardes, consejo. Como alguien que hace negocios en la ciudad, le exijo que vote en contra de esta resolución. La demanda de silencio es basada en distorsiones y inaccurancias y voy a hablar solo de dos de ellas. Hay una alegación de que la CAA va a privar a más de 200 millones de más musulmanes de India de su ciudadanía. Eso es falso. Eso es categoricamente falso. La CAA no tiene nada que ver con los ciudadanos indios. No se perderá una ciudadano de India su ciudadanía, su o su ciudadanía debido a la CAA. Si ese fuera el caso, estaría del otro lado protestando por sus derechos. No se perderá una sola ciudadana de India su ciudadanía. Número dos, la CAA permite la expedición de naturalización de personas perseguidas por minorías de gobierno patrocinadas de tres países. Ahora, la palabra clave es "persegución patrocinada por el gobierno" y en estos tres países solo son cristianos, hindus, sikh y budistas. Son la gente que está perseguida, están convertidas, están asesinadas, incluso carecen de las necesidades básicas y oportunidades. Así que le pido, ¿merecen ser asesinados debido a su religión? ¿Son hijos de un dios menor? No, Miss Savant, esos refugiados no merecen menos que usted. Son parte de la una humanidad. Ahora, también se alega que la CAA es discriminatoria y fascista porque cada grupo religioso no está cubierto por esta ley. De nuevo, lo siento. Esa es la altura de la hipocresía. Estoy seguro de que todos ustedes están conscientes del amendment de Lautenberg que el presidente Obama firmó, dando una ruta rápida a Estados Unidos para las minorías perseguidas en Irán. ¿Adivinen qué? Son judíos, cristianos y bhais están cubiertos bajo Lautenberg. Musulmanes no. ¿Por qué es eso? No son sujetos a la persecución patrocinada por el gobierno. Ahora, le pido, ¿el presidente Obama es un intolerante debido a esto?
Gracias.
Así que, Miss Savant, usted sabe, él no es un intolerante. Usted sabe, esta resolución es intolerante.
Lo aprecio. Bien, la siguiente persona es Shampad. Y como recordatorio a los gente, si están en grupo, los gente que están con ustedes también no pueden hablar más tarde, ¿vale? Así que están tomando una decisión de hablar como... Bien, vámonos.
Así que estoy en un grupo, lo siento.
Bien.
Hola, buenas tardes, queridos miembros del consejo y a todos. Soy Shampad. Soy un hindu bangladesco. Acabo de venir aquí para mostrar algunos hechos. En 2001, el partido alianzado BNP Jamar comenzó a gobernar en Bangladesh. Tan pronto como llegaron a gobernar, comenzó la rampa de persecución contra la minoría. Una niña de 12 años, Purani Mashil, una niña hindú adulta, fue agredida por un hombre de treinta y un y su madre sin ayuda estaba llorando, por favor, la rapee una a la otra. Ella es demasiado joven, de lo contrario, morirá. Esa noticia se viralizó. Durante ese tiempo, 10,000 casos de violación fueron documentados en Bola Borishal en Bangladesh. Imagine el escenario de las minorías en todo el país. Igualdad ocurrió en 1990 también. La condición de las minorías en Pakistán y Afganistán es aún peor. Personalmente he experimentado esos días horribles en 2001, donde sentimos hostiles en nuestro propio país, y no podemos decir nada en las redes sociales o en ningún lugar. Aquellos que están oponiendo a la CAA, solo quería preguntarles una pregunta simple. ¿Esas pobres minorías perseguidas que ya estaban en India durante 20 a 30 años, obtuvieron ciudadanía india? Sí o no? Si la respuesta es no, entonces la CAA es una política hecha por el gobierno indio para esas pobres minorías perseguidas, igual que USA hizo provisiones especiales para dar ciudadanía a los judíos durante la Segunda Guerra Mundial bajo el Acto de Lautenberg. ¿Por qué los musulmanes no están incluidos? Porque los musulmanes perseguidos no quieren ir a India, así que no están en esa lista. Tengo amigos bangladescos, amigos ahmadíes, también enfrentan la persecución. ¿Vieron a India? La respuesta es no. Los chias perseguidos fueron a Irán, los amedhias perseguidos fueron a Bahrein. Bangladesh da ayudas a 5 millones de rohingas y muchos otros países mediterráneos, incluso Europa y USA también dan asilo a rohingas. Pero estas pobres minorías perseguidas de Bangladesh, Pakistán y Afganistán, no tienen lugar a ir excepto a India. ¿Puede mostrarme cualquier pobre minoría perseguida de Bangladesh, Pakistán y Afganistán, en cualquier lugar del mundo excepto a India? La respuesta es no. Solicito que todos tomen decisión.
Gracias. Aretha, por favor, leerá los siguientes tres nombres. Gracias, señor.
Los siguientes tres nombres son Atul, Archana Sunil y Michael Parker.
Yo hablaré como grupo.
Bien, déjame ver si su nombre ha sido llamado, señor.
El grupo de Sanjay.
Su nombre.
Sí, Michael Parker.
Bien, genial. Solo estaba asegurándome porque pensé que usted era parte del grupo anterior. Bien.
Hablo como grupo. Sanjay y Sanjay, estoy conmigo.
Vámonos.
Mis respetos a todos. Trabajo en Seattle y soy residente desde 2001. Es mi plea a todos que voten no para la resolución 31926. La CAA de India es un camino hacia la ciudadanía para la minoría religiosa perseguida de Pakistán, Bangladesh y Afganistán. Ahora, ¿quiénes son? Después de la independencia de India y Pakistán en 1947, las naciones islámicas de Pakistán y Bangladesh tenían el 23% de la población que era minoría religiosa. Hoy, estos números disminuyen en Pakistán a menos del 3%. Quiero preguntar al consejo, ¿cómo creen que perdieron el 20% de la población minoritaria mientras India ha crecido orgullosamente su población minoritaria de 15% a 22% durante el mismo período de tiempo? Quiero preguntar al honorable consejo, ¿cuántos prime ministras y presidentes tenía Pakistán y Bangladesh que pertenecían a la comunidad minoritaria durante décadas, mientras que India tenía varios presidentes, prime ministras y líderes top de la comunidad sikh, cristiana y musulmana? Quiero preguntar al honorable consejo, ¿sabe cuántos personas religiosas minoritarias son asesinadas, encarceladas y castigadas bajo las leyes de blasfemio pakistana de Draconio con un alcance atroz? ¿No nos dice una historia brillante sobre los derechos de las minorías de Pakistán y cómo se rompen todos los días? Por lo tanto, le exijo al consejo que se enfoce más en las leyes y el espíritu del que estamos discutiendo y sus intenciones y no se desvanezca con cualquier impresión preconcebida de los líderes actuales de India, cualquier prejuicio formado o cualquier retórica basada en un par de artículos de noticias nuevos. La CAA es verdaderamente humanitaria, mu y v. Seattle no puede estar en el lado equivocado de la historia. Oponiendo el Acto de la Ciudadanía de la Ciudadanía de la Acción de la Acción de la Ciudad de la Nación, esta ley es una roba de hierro. Por favor, no haga esto. Gracias.
Gracias. Archana.
Sí. Como alguien que hace negocios en Seattle y tiene orgullo de mostrar Seattle a sus amigos y familia, le pido que oponga 31926. Pakistán fue creado de India no dividida en 1947 debido al deseo del líder de la Liga Musulmana, Muhammad Ali Janha. Los musulmanes cruzaron a Pakistán y muchos hindus, sikh, cristianos y otros cruzaron a la India nuevamente dividida, mientras que algunos de ellos no pudieron cruzar a India y para ellos Mahatma Gandhi dijo, y cité, "Si los hindus y sikh en Pakistán sienten inseguro y quieren venir a India en el futuro, pueden venir en cualquier momento sin dudar. Será la responsabilidad del gobierno indio proporcionarles trabajo, ayudas, ciudadanía y una vida respetable", terminó. Queridos miembros del consejo, todo lo que hace la CAA es cumplir esa promesa exagerada. La resolución de Miss Savant convenientemente ignora esta verdad. Desde 1941 hasta 2015, la población hindua en Pakistán, por ejemplo, ha disminuido de 15% a menos del 3% debido a violación, conversiones forzadas y otros violaciones de derechos humanos. En Bangladesh, las minorías religiosas han ido de...
Gracias mucho. Michael, aprecio su paciencia. Aretha, voy a hacerle leer los siguientes tres personas después de Michael. Gracias, señora. Su tiempo está completo. Lo siento, ya hemos visto al Sr. Ram antes. Tienen tres personas. Es bienvenida como grupo, pero tiene que ser tres personas separadas y las personas ya han tomado su tiempo para venir. Vámonos, Michael, justo después de Aretha. ¿Qué es eso?
Estoy aquí con Manju Nath and Sri como grupo.
Bien, ¿puede mostrarme quién es? Oh, eso es un pena. Bien, eso es... Voy a dejarle hablar como grupo, pero quiero ser realmente clara con los gente. El grupo pretende permitir a múltiples personas hablar. Appreciate what you have to say and I'm sorry that that was not clear, but only the three people who have not come up before can come up and speak as a group. Así que también estamos contentos de tomar testimonio escrito. Aretha, ¿puede leer las tres personas que salen después de Michael?
Después de Michael serán Padma Ayala, Shiva, no puedo decir el último nombre, y Ashish.
Bien, Michael, vámonos.
Miembros del honorable consejo, estoy feliz de estar aquí y compartir mi opinión personal y perspectiva sobre esto y puede ser único para casi todos en esta habitación. Básicamente, tengo tres directos y inmediatos familiares que fueron colocados en campamentos internos aquí en Washington solo para ser japoneses americanos. Así que me impacta cuando escucho sobre la sufrimiento de las minorías. También trabajé con NASA, que es la Asociación de Estudiantes Native Americanos en Oregon para construir su almacén en el colegio. Así que he dedicado mi vida a la lucha indígena y a ayudar, usted sabe, a arreglar el deuda que debemos a los habitantes originales de este país. Así que básicamente fui a India para ver la condición de estos refugiados bangladescos por mí mismo. Quería ver en el terreno lo que estaban pasando, cuáles eran sus experiencias. Y estaba horrorizado de verlos totalmente ignorados y no tienen tierras, así que construyen casas poniéndose sobre canales de basura. Le pregunté dónde está la amnistía, dónde están las Naciones Unidas, dónde está el gobierno indio. Nada, nadie les está ayudando. Y no he podido hacer nada para ayudarlos. Y luego cuando escuché sobre este proyecto, fue el primer rayo de esperanza en sus vidas, que ahora están obteniendo ciudadanía completa, como todos los otros indios de ese país de India. Así que para mí fue una gran noticia y tocó mi corazón. Y luego cuando comencé a ver las protestas y todo eso, estaba confundida con ello porque entiendo que todos están aquí y son muy sinceros y son esfuerzos humanitarios y tengo buena noticia para compartir con todos ustedes. El hecho es que en 2015, el gobierno Narendra Modi dio casi 15,000 ciudadanías bangladescas en India en 2015, años antes de que se presentara esta ley de la CAA. Así que estos rumores y estas mentiras que están pasando, que los musulmanes están olvidados y ignorados, es falso. Así que todos ustedes, esto es buena noticia. Es algo para celebrar. Gracias, Narendra Modi, por ayudar a todos...
La siguiente persona es Padma. 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 Hola, Padma. Vámonos, Padma.
¡Vaya, vaya, vaya!
Bien, vámonos, Padma.
Gracias.
¿Esto se permite?
Estamos en un grupo. Gracias, consejo, por esta oportunidad y estoy aquí para expresar mi oposición a la resolución 31926 de miembro Savant. Mi nombre es Padma Ayala. Soy la hija de Sri Subharavayala y Athani y el líder de la Unión de Trabajadores que dedicó toda su vida en el servicio de los pobres, sin respeto a su religión, raza y género. Y el asbesto que cubriera nuestra casa junto con nosotros vivía muchos musulmanes y cristianos. Sí, yo vengo de las raíces. Antes de hablar de la CAA, quiero citar lo que Mahatma Gandhi dijo una vez, "Hindus y Sikhs y otras minorías de Pakistán que no quieren vivir allí pueden venir a India. Es el deber del gobierno de India garantizar una vida normal para ellos". Así que no estoy citando a Gandhi porque es padre de la nación, ni es una inspiración para muchos, sea ML King o Mandela o el presidente Obama, pero estoy citando a Gandhi porque cuando toda la nación estaba celebrando el primer día de independencia de India en 1947, Gandhi estaba trabajando en la frontera oriental de Pakistán, inmerso en salvar las vidas de los hindus minoritos. ¿Estamos diciendo que Miss Savant sabe más sobre India que Gandhi? La CAA es un signo de modernidad y valores humanitarios. Es una extensión a la tradición de India de dar asilo a las masas perseguidas de todo el mundo. En el pasado, India dio asilo a los cristienses sirios autódicos en el siglo IV y a los zorostríes del siglo VIII y muchas veces a los judíos cuando estaban en problemas. Estoy seguro, consejo, que estarán de acuerdo conmigo de que entender un problema relacionado con un país necesita una perspectiva más profunda y si el consejo no puede invertir tal tiempo debido a sus prioridades y problemas existentes, es comprensible. Espero que el consejo no se implique, no se deje de rezar por la codicia del pueblo por el poder y los otros motivos ulteriores. Por último, su voto por Kshama es un voto para violación de los hindus y los sikh chicas.
Bien.
Su voto por Kshama es un voto para la opresión minoritaria. Su voto por Kshama es un voto en contra de la verdad y su voto por Kshama es en contra de la ciudadanía a varias minorías que escaparon de las persecuciones.
La siguiente persona es Shiva. Shiva, y de nuevo, recordaré a los gente, estamos perdiendo tiempo para que la gente hable cuando ustedes no hacen esto para aplausos. Shiva es la siguiente.
Soy Ashish. Trabajo en Seattle y estoy en contra de 31926. Estoy leyendo del Report de las Naciones Unidas sobre el estado de las mujeres en Pakistán en 2019. Citados, Pakistán retrata a las minorías religiosas como ciudadanos de segunda clase y caza intolerancia, discriminación y violencia. Las comunidades cristianas y hindúes permanecen vulnerables, especialmente mujeres y chicas. Cada año, miles son abduciados, violados, asesinados o forzados a convertirse o casarse con hombres musulmanes. Citados cerrados. A través de la CAA, India da una vida de dignidad a tales minorías que fueron fortunadas lo suficiente como para escapar de Pakistán. Desafortunadamente, la señora Savant no tiene resentimiento por las minorías terrorizadas por los hindus de Pakistán y Bangladesh, ya que no son su banco de votos. Está impulsando sus ambiciones políticas en los cuerpos de las minorías al colaborar con la gente y grupos respaldados por Pakistán y su agencia de terror, ISI. De hecho, hay gente aquí hoy que proviene de Bangladesh y Pakistán y están fingiendo que provienen de India y son hindus. Y espero que no quieran caer en ese tráfico. Gracias.
Aretha, ¿puede usted, por favor, leer los siguientes tres nombres? Los siguientes tres nombres, por favor.
Sí. Los siguientes tres personas serán Jagdish Sharma, Sandesh Kumar y Lavanya Reddy.
Gracias. Y mientras hacemos eso, quiero recordarle a los gente, estamos aquí para testificar sobre temas de la agenda y recibimos cualquier perspectiva. and we welcome any perspective. We do not welcome attacks on individual council members or impugning motives. So I just want to reinforce that. And we'll happily hear any conversation, though, about policy. Again, no applauding today. We're trying to get through as fast as we can, and no booing. Jagdish? I'm sorry if I mispronounced that. Aretha? Jagdish?
Jagdish.
Jagdish?
Yeah. Madam President, my name is Jagdish Sharma, Chair, Indo-American Federation Forum, and I'm against Resolution 31926. At the economic front, we co-sponsor with the Trade Development Alliance of Greater Seattle by organizing many meetings with Greater Seattle business leaders, with several ambassadors of India to the US. At the social front, as a president and board member of the Ethnic Heritage Council of Seattle, we partnered with the city of Seattle to organize naturalization ceremonies at Seattle Center for almost six years. In my humble opinion, council member sound has a lot of misinformation about CAA and NRC, unfortunately. CAA does not take away the citizenship of any Indian citizen, including 200 million Muslim citizens. Rather, it provides citizenship to the persecuted minorities from Pakistan, Bangladesh, Afghanistan. It is very similar to our Lautenberg Act. NRC is a separate process. NRC rules and procedures for the country are yet to be decided. NRC is merely a normal process to register individuals' name in the citizens' register. Citizenship of any person is decided on the basis of the citizenship rules on 2009. For a diverse and cosmopolitan city like Seattle, which has a history of communal harmony and brotherhood, the resolution may act as a major divisive force. Such resolution also have detrimental effect in the overall context of the Indo-US relations. And Seattle has very challenging issues right here: homelessness, affordability, crime, safety. I think we should focus on those ones, rather save our energy resources. I strongly urge all the council members...
Appreciate it. Thank you for your patience, mister. Thank you very much for your patience, Shiva.
I'm in a group.
Okay. And you're Shiva?
Yeah, I'm Shiva. Can I start?
Please.
So I am Shiva Varadaran. I oppose this resolution. Working in the downtown area for over a decade now, it's common for me to witness homeless people on the streets, many under influence of drugs, or even administering one themselves. It's a very common scene for me. I walk my parking lot to my work. Making me ponder every day what city can do to address such a crisis. Shouldn't our focus be Seattle's own problem and take up this issue? The emotionally charged opposition in Savant's lobby is indulging in sheer fearmongering and dividing Seattle communities for easy political brownie points. I see it feeding off of misconstrued conjecture leading to fearmongering and hatred, potentially leading to unrest, the same kind of unrest which we saw in India, where we saw trains torched by miscreants. And this just happened very recently. The population of minorities in Pakistan and Bangladesh went down from 23% to under 2%, a massive cleansing of minorities in millions, which means either they were converted or they were migrated, which I don't know which country is welcoming them, or they were eliminated. Empirically speaking, any remaining minorities in this country would perish in few years from now if no action is taken. If this trend continues, what would be the answer the council has when it becomes zero in those countries? Section 5 of Indian citizenship law currently allows any migrant from any nation to come to India. All this law does is fast-track citizenship for few deprived... Few thousands of deprived, persecuted minorities, and nothing more. It's fast-tracking it from 11 years to 12 years to six years.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Santosh? Thank you, sir.
I'm Santosh Kumar. I'm a resident of Seattle University District for the last 35 years, actually 50 years. I am against the resolution, and I have a few points to make. First, in today's gathering, you will notice the banner saying, "Genocide in India." Yes, there is a genocide in India, but it's a genocide of Hindus in India. The Hindus in 19...
Please continue.
Hindus in 1950 made 80% of the population. Hindus today in India make only 65% of the population. That's point one. The other major point is that India has had several million people arriving in its territory from the neighboring countries over the last, let's say, 50 years. Now, this group of people consists of two groups. Group A, who are few hundred thousand. They are the persecuted non-Muslim population for which the government of India has laid a CAA Act, which is a fast-track citizenship track. And you are hearing about it. Now, the second group...
Thank you, sir. That's your time. Council members, we have hit the end of our 20-minute time period. I would like to ask for the council's indulgence. If it pleases the council, I would like to suggest that we continue to hear public comment for at least another 20 minutes. If there's no objection to the public comment period being extended another 20 minutes, I'll say 22 minutes to get us exactly to 3:00 PM, I'd like to entertain that suggestion. Hearing no objection. And it's something's up. Thank you, council member. We are hearing no objection, and so we are going to go ahead and extend the council comment period for another 22 minutes to 3:00 PM. Aretha, please read into the record the next three people, and I know we have one person up in the ducat, too. Okay.
The next person up is Lavanya. After Lavanya would be Venkat Ayer, Guru, number 14, Amrik Singh Kamal, and Payavi Brave.
Wonderful. Thank you. Lavanya, thank you for your patience. Lavanya, your time is starting.
I'm Lavanya Reddy, Executive Vice President of National Federation of Indian Associations.
Go ahead.
Pardon? Greetings of peace. I'm Lavanya Reddy, Executive Vice President of National Federation of Indian Associations, and I lived 30 years in Seattle. I'm against 31923. Resolution today. Seattle has major drug and homeless people problems. And we have violence on the roads and gun shootings on very safe Fourth Avenue. Every day, we look at them and wonder what Seattle council is doing. Okay? And your resolution won't affect India. It affects us, the people who are living in Seattle. You should build bridges, not burn them. Okay? You are dividing among us. And Seattle was declared as a sister city to Hyderabad by Christine Gregoire a few years ago. And it would affect business and trade with India. And India gave $80,000 Gandhi statue to Washington as a gift. And we were working 15 years to get Indian consulate in Seattle. If you pass, you deprive us that opportunity. And I would ask one question to Savant. Because if you deprived India, who gave you birth? What is the guarantee tomorrow you don't deprive the United States? Answer me, please.
Okay. The next person is Venkat?
Yeah. My name is Venkat Ayer. I'm a resident of Seattle area since 1997. Now, I'm here to present my case against Resolution 31926 because this resolution is based on blatant lies and is an attempt to mislead the Seattle city as well as the community for ulterior motives. Let me start out by saying that India got partitioned in 1947. Before partition, India's founding father, Mahatma Gandhi, basically promised the minorities of Pakistan and Bangladesh, which used to be East Pakistan, that if the minorities in those countries felt unsafe, they could always return back to India. Now, let me give you an example of the atrocities that is happening in Pakistan and Bangladesh. On January 26th of this year, just a week ago, a minority Pakistani woman was abducted from her wedding ceremony, repeat, wedding ceremony, forcibly converted to Islam and married off to a Muslim man. The Pakistan Human Rights Commission has stated this is not an isolated incident. It says that over the last 15 years, 7,500 cases have been reported just in the province of Sindh, and the national score runs into tens of thousands. Okay? The minority population of Pakistan has dwindled by 8x over the last 50 years. And in Bangladesh, by 3x. That's nothing but genocide. That's nothing but ethnic cleansing. Okay? 31926 is based on complete lies. It does not take away the citizenship of the 200 million-plus Indian Muslims as is being quoted. India doesn't stop Muslims of other countries or anybody else from acquiring citizenship. In fact, the most famous Bollywood singer, Adnan Sami, was born in Pakistan. He's now a proud Indian and was recently awarded the Padmashri, which is the highest civilian award one can get for excellence in music. This resolution is blatant lies. It's been brought up here to promote divisiveness in the community. I would strongly urge you all to reject it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Guru? Guru, is that you? Oh, Guru, hello. Thank you. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, council members.
Yes.
I am actually Amrik Singh Kamal, and I'm from National Federation of Indian Associations. And I have been living here in Seattle area for the last about 41 years. I lived in Seattle, but now I have a business in Seattle. Citizens Amendment Act and National Registry of Citizens are not discriminatory to any minorities. CAA gives legal status to those minorities living in India before 2015 from Islamic states of Asia, where Hindus, Sikhs, Jains, Christians, and other minorities have been constantly either converted forcibly or simply killed over the last about seven to eight decades. India, unlike any other country in the world, is the only country that give protection to the minorities through CAA. Now, I want to give you some Google research. Hudson Institute talks about minority population. And also, Farhanaz Asfani, who is the media advisor to the president of Pakistan from 2008 to 2012, she write in her book, Purifying the Land of the Pure. Basically, the stats are the non-Muslims in 1947 comprised of 23% of the population. Now, by 2011, that population has gone down to 3.7%. In Bangladesh, non-Muslim comprised of 22% of the population, and their share in 2011 fell to 7.8%. Minorities continue to suffer and turning to India as a savior. CAA benefits over 31,000 Hindus, Sikhs, Christians, Jains, and Persis by granting them legal status. It is equivalent to the amnesty law that we are all asking here from our government. India has the largest democracy and enjoys a great relationship with our country. Let's try to understand the issue.
Okay, sir.
Ask those who are getting the citizenship...
Thank you very much. And you were Amrik? Is that correct? Okay, thank you. I accidentally missed Guru. Okay, thank you. Please go ahead.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm a citizen of... I'm an immigrant citizen of this country for the past 12 years. I'm here to speak against the resolution by council member Kshama Savant. Let me begin with a list of legal laws and verdicts the council must go through to understand the CAA and NRC before making a call. The CAA is based on the Foreign Affairs Act of 1946 and the Citizenship Act of 1955, and about six subsequent amendments in 1986, 1992, 2003, 2005, 2015, and as recent as 2019. Whereas the NRC is based on an act called an IMDb Act, which was Illegal Migrants Detention Act or Prevention Act of 1983, and Assam Act of 1985, and the Supreme Court of India verdicts of 2005, 2006, and 2014. I hope the council took the time to read, understand, and assimilate these acts, amendments, and laws before deciding to hear on this resolution. If not, it runs the risk of hurting the very democracy it attempts to protect by fanning the separatist forces. There are three key questions to this council that I want to propose. What are you basing your decisions on? Laws of the world's largest democracy or a newspaper at your local coffee shop? Who are the real minorities that you are supporting? One agreed to by the Supreme Court of a sovereign nation or one invented by the media? What are you supporting? Largest democracy in the world or separatism masquerading itself as liberalism? Resolution 31900, passed by this council on 9 September 2019, starts with reclaiming the inherent responsibility of the city to protect its most vulnerable populations. Ask yourself if it is wrong for a country to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. And please introduce yourself.
Pallavi.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Mehak Keishwani, Nimrit Chandan, Jagjit Kaur were abducted, raped, and forcibly converted in Pakistan. Nimrit, a medical student, was brutally murdered afterwards. These are just three names out of over 1,000 girls from Hindu, Sikh, Christian, Jewish, and Buddhist communities that faced the same fate as Nimrit or are sold into the Chinese flesh trade. Dear council members, imagine yourself or your daughters in Mehak's or Jagjit's place. Washington State is among top 10 in settling refugees. Can Washingtonians in good conscience denounce a humanitarian law that embraces refugees and offers them a life of dignity? A vote against CAA is a vote against humanity. Please reject Resolution 31926. I thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you for your time. As we started with the council, we have asked individuals who are elected to come to the microphone in advance. I want to apologize to council member Raees Khan, who's a council member from the city of Makoltio. If the council member is here, they're welcome to come up to the microphone. Welcome, council member. And then after that, I'll read the next three items. Deepa in group, Anila in group, and Ashish Kher in group. Go ahead, council member. Thank you for waiting.
Thank you so much for giving a chance.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Council member, I just want to start. I'm going back so many years. What happened in India? India used to be ruled by other Muslims. And the Muslims built basically India. The Taj Mahal. I'm telling you. I'm telling you. What Muslims have built? Muslims built Taj Mahal.
Sir, just one second. Everybody, we've been really good...
Muslims built Taj Mahal.
Sir, council member. One second, please, council member. Everybody, we're going to continue with public testimony. You've been really great about letting folks talk so far, so please continue.
When I say the Muslims, right? We're Muslims, Hindus, Sikh, and everybody. We got together, we built India. Okay? Then we built a Taj Mahal. Khutob Minar. Who built a Taj Mahal? I mean, like, we were so pleased with everyone. But now I started with a person who has two fake degrees and putting the Muslims down. This is very unfair. This very totally unfair. So today, right? We are here. We left our jobs. We left our home. We are here to ask something. It's called equality. So we are here to ask everyone here in the council to give us a chance. So we are here to ask everyone here in the council to give us a chance, listen to the people who came from far places. This is NCR, and why? I mean, if something is happening, should happen to everyone. If affects, so why we are here today? If something happens to India, should happen here same way. How we feel the pain here? Today, we are suffering, we should help everyone, including Muslims, Sikh, Hindus, everyone. There is opposition. Why they are supporting? I mean, we want to have a peaceful life, like everybody else. I mean, like, what's going on, what happened in India? Why? People come and go. We have seen so many Modi's, we have seen so many people, there's so many kings, the presidents come and go, but our values should remain the same. Today, we are here, a banner called togetherness. We have to bring the peace, justice to everyone. We should give chance to all the people around the world to live peacefully, like citizenship paths here, right, just like United States, they might have same thing over there too, but add Muslims, add everyone, add everyone people who deserve the citizenship. Thank you so much.
Thank you, council member.
How do you chance other people too? Thank you.
Thank you, council member Khan. We, uh, we appreciate your time, and you're welcome to Seattle anytime. Thank you, council member. We have Deepa and Group.
Excuse me, it looks like I am speaking. The people are speaking.
Ma'am, ma'am, we're, we are going to continue reading. Deepa and Group?
Thank you, thank you. My name is Deepa Sivirajan. I'm here with the Coalition of South Asians who have come to ask you to vote yes.
Ma'am, ma'am, we are going to try to get to everyone. We're going to try. People, folks, what I've done, all right, we're going to have to, we're going to have to shut this down. We have had 50 minutes, 50 minutes of individuals coming in to speak as groups. What I'm trying to do is get as many people in as possible, recognizing there's folks downstairs, upstairs. I will ask those who are being disruptive to leave if we have to. What we have in front of us is a list of groups that have come. I have read three groups, I have read three groups, and we will continue with the list. So, I know, and I'm going to go back. So, right now, we have already entertained 50 minutes. This, we will end public testimony if these three groups go forward and they're, they continue. So, right now, right now, we are going to hear from three groups, folks, three groups. All right. I am coming back to the list, I am coming back to the list. At this point, let's have a testimony. This point, council colleagues. Please listen, can you please listen to the council president? Everybody, I have tried, I have tried to make sure that we get through this list. Right now, we have over 100 people who have signed up. What I have done, what I have done is I've allowed for the first two full sheets to happen. However, we have a bunch of folks who've also signed up downstairs, and I've asked three groups to come up to represent as a group. Now, we're going to do those three groups. Do those three groups, and we will resume with the list as long as we can. The alternative, the alternative is that we end public testimony. Okay. We're going to go ahead and take a recess. I'll take a five-minute recess. Five-minute recess. So, everybody, I apologize for the delay. I understand that folks were concerned about the process that I outlined, so let me get through the next few announcements without interruption, please. My intent was to try to get through as many people as possible, and in doing so, allow groups to have a little extra time. I looked for items on the names that had groups, I understand that caused frustration because many people have been lined up for a long time. I do want to hear from as many people as possible. So, what I'm going to do is ask for our council colleagues to consider extending public comment for another 15 minutes. I will go back to the list, which does appear to be individuals. I apologize to the groups that have also signed up, that are not able to speak today. I will have to cut off public comment at 15 minutes. I will say that we have received hundreds of emails, and those individuals who are waiting downstairs, I know that you also have waited a long time to come upstairs, and so my intent was to try to get some folks from downstairs as well up. But what we're going to do is we are going to have the list, I will read through the next 15, uh, sorry, for the next 15 minutes, and I will go back to the individuals that were next on the list and not search for the groups. It was my intent to try to get groups up, and so I do apologize for the missed, missed opportunity to hear from the folks who aren't able to speak today, but we would love to take written comment and appreciate your understanding today. With that, council colleagues, I would like to ask for you to extend public comment for another 15 minutes to 3:18. Hearing no objection? Did you have a comment?
Yes, as long as proper decorum is put in place, you know, no shouting, you know, cheering, I would like to see good decorum for the remaining 15 minutes. Everyone here has been very patient and very listening, so please respect the President Protem's requests, and I will back you up on that.
Thank you very much, council member Strauss. We appreciate that. Hearing no objection, the public comment period is extended 15 minutes to 3:19. I also recognize that council member Lewis, you have a hard stop at four, and you have the five items on the agenda, so we are going to get to your items before the 4:00 p.m. period. With that, I do apologize for the confusion, and I would love to take your written comment because I'm going to go back to the list of individuals. The next three people to speak are Bhakiti, Joshi, Sashi, Shingji, and Aretha, could you mind reading the next individuals?
Yes. The next three names are Bhakti Joshi, Shasti Singh, and Dhirindra Tovar. That is numbers 17, 18, and 19.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you very much for your consideration, council. I really appreciate it. Good afternoon, my name is Bhakti Joshi. I request you to vote no for Shama Sawant's Resolution 31926. I have maintained sources of information that I am about to share here. I am going to read the names, simply read the names of the girls of marriageable age from the countries covered by CAA. These girls were abducted, forcibly converted, or forcibly married only because they belong to minority in those countries. Number one, Jamna, age 12, place Sajawal Sindh. Number two, name Rinkal Kumari, age 19, place Mirpur Sinh Pravis. Number three, name Nimritta Chandani, age around 20, place BB Asifa Dental College, Larkana, Pakistan. Number four, name Jagjit Kaur, age around 20, place Nankana Sahib Gurudwara, Pakistan. Number five, Anwar Masih's daughter.
Thank you, ma'am. And we're happy to take your written comment. The next person, Sashi?
Good afternoon, everyone. I am Sashi Singh, and I am here to oppose Ms. Shawant Resolution 31926 against CAA, NRC, and India. The CAA provides fast-track citizenship to persecuted people of minorities from India's three neighboring countries who have been living in India before December 31st, 2014. They were living in those countries without basic human rights. The CAA passed in the Indian Parliament with the support of India's opposition parties. Right now, the NRC is not any issue at this stage because it's implemented only in one state of India on Supreme Court's order and supervision, and the statement regarding NRC in the resolution are incorrect. I request the council to support CAA. It provides opportunity to the persecuted minority.
Thank you, ma'am. The next person is, Pradigra?
The next person is, um...
Um, sir, we're only doing one minute so that we can get through as many people in this 15 minutes.
So, my name is Dhirindra Tovar, I work in Seattle, I'm against Resolution 31926.
There you go. Thank you.
NRC is not yet law in India. Speculating about NRC is like planning for divorce before marriage. NRC was carried out only in the state of Assam because of an agreement in 1984. Assam is complicated because of the presence of large number of refugees due to Pakistan's genocide in Bangladesh in 1971. I'm listing the following 24 documents that are valid proof of citizenship in Assam. 1951 NRC, electoral rolls, land and tenancy records, citizenship certificate, permanent residential certificate, refugee registration certificate, passport, LIC, any government issued license certificate, government service, employment certificate, bank post office accounts, birth certificate, board university educational certificate, court records, processes. If you do not have any of the above documents, an additional eight common documents such as a ration card or land document of a parent, grandparent, or great-grandparent are valid. There are tribunals and courts one can appeal to. Ms. Shawant's resolution is misleading and fear-mongering on NRC. Here is also a petition signed by over 11,300 Indian-Americans, asking you to reject this divisive resolution which doesn't even concern your tax-paying constituents.
Thank you very much, sir. And we will have to take your document, appreciate it. Aretha, could you read the next three people, please?
Yes. The next names are Manohar Kiran and, um, Nageshwara.
Great. Okay, do we have Manohar? Okay, thank you.
Respect, council member, namaste. My name is Manohar, I live in Redmond. I'm here to speak against Resolution 31926 and all my personal views. The Resolution 31926 is deeply flawed, misguided, and will negatively impact the state of Washington and U.S.-India relationship. Not only should this council drop this resolution, I request council to support India's CAA because it protects the most vulnerable people, grant them the religious freedom they were denied and persecuted in their home country. Please kindly help our extended family, friends, brothers, and sisters who are in the deep need, make their dream of freedom come true by opposing the Resolution 31926. Dhanyavat.
Thank you. Kamira? Kirman?
Kiran?
Okay, and the next three, Aretha?
The next three are Nageshwara, Milen, and Rama.
I'm here.
Wonderful, go ahead.
Namaste, everyone. I am Nageshwara, and I'm living in Seattle in the last 10 years, and I request honorable council members today to reject Resolution 31926. Let me talk about what CAA is created for, right? So, CAA is created to provide the citizenship in a fast track for minorities who are persecuted in Pakistan, Bangladesh, and Afghanistan. CAA does not talk about or intend to remove citizenship for anyone in general. NRC is also mentioned in the resolution. So, NRC is mandated by the Supreme Court. It's not by the government, but by the Supreme Court of India itself in the state of Assam, so that the state will know clearly who the citizens are, and thereby helps the government to provide all those benefits and the subsidies to the state citizens, and the country citizens, rather, so that they all enjoy all the benefits like anybody else. And India provides, by the way, all the reservations to minorities like unlike any other countries, and I strongly request the council to...
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Next, go ahead, sir. We have Milen.
I thought it was you first. You're Milen.
Okay, Milen, Rama, okay, Rama.
My name is, my name is Billen Kulkarni.
Okay.
I'm a District 7 voter in, uh, council member Lewis's district. I support Seattle as a welcome city to all. My name is Billen Kulkarni, I'm a District 7 voter. I support Seattle as a welcoming city to all. I ask you to vote no on this resolution because of the following questions. Question number one, are you 100% sure that this resolution makes factually correct statements on which you can put your own credibility online? Question number two, has the council had a chance to review the history, or 4,000 history of India, its culture, and how it shaped people's sentiments? Question number three, have you studied human rights violations in Pakistan, Afghanistan, and Bangladesh to understand the necessity of India's Constitutional Amendment Act? And question number four, are you sure that the council is not being played by extremist ideology? Please say no.
Thank you. Rama?
Rama?
I'm here today because I believe in humanity, and it is my responsibility to show solidarity and support for all those millions of persecuted minorities who are already killed brutally in Pakistan, Bangladesh, and Afghanistan, and those who escaped those persecution and seeking helping hands. India has taken the step to embrace them and provide the path to better life and future in India through CAA. That is the symbol of true India, where every single citizen of India is treated with dignity and lead life with no discrimination on religion, caste, creed, and sex. It is very evident from the fact that how minority population has increased and flourished in India since independence, and at the same time, you have to note down that minority population has been persecuted and decreased in Pakistan, Bangladesh, and Afghanistan. So it is my moral responsibility to oppose 31926 resolution on this ground, and I'm here with the belief that the honorable council members will verify facts and not sway by myth and lies.
Thank you very much, sir. Uh, the next three council member are the next three, uh, public speakers, Aretha?
Anu Kumar, Rahul Tarambal, and Manohar Bodke.
And those last two folks, just a reminder, we're going to do one minute for everybody here. Go ahead, sir.
Good afternoon, brothers and sisters of Seattle. I'm here to reject, to request you to reject the Resolution 31926, which is against CAA and the persecuted minorities. And after gathering all the thoughts here, with all the folks present here, I am actually left with only this piece of paper, which is not a Facebook post, this is a reality check of what is going on till today, even now. As we speak, many of the brothers or sisters, many of our sisters, daughters, and mothers have, are being persecuted even now. It's not an issue that is done and dusted, it is still ongoing, and this is, this is the fate of many of the non-Hindus, sorry, it's fate of non-Muslims in Pakistan, and this is a recruitment program from Pakistan Rangers that allows only, allows the non-Muslims to be only part of sanitation workers, or sweepers, or cleaners. So this is the reality that we, we are actually opposed to, and we want to protect those minorities.
Thank you very much.
God bless America, God bless humanity.
Rahul? Hello?
Uh, honorable council members, I'm Rahul Tarambale, working in Seattle. I'm here to oppose Kshama's 31926 resolution. I just want to share one thing. My 12-year-old read CAA, and he told me, you know what? The citizens who will lose citizenship because of CAA from India, including Muslims, other religions, caste, women, LGBT, the number is zero. Nobody is going to lose citizenship. Since through various authentic sources, it is established that the details in the resolution are incorrect. As a law-abiding citizen and tax-paying citizen, I would urge council members to focus on current burning issues in Seattle. Can we make Seattle safer? Can we solve day-to-day issues? Can we improve living condition of homeless and needy? That will justify my tax money. This beautiful city will always be welcoming city to everyone, but such resolutions which spread fear based on the lies, factually incorrect data driven by political ambition will divide it.
Thank you. Thank you, Manohar. And we're happy to take written testimony. Aretha, the next three names, please.
Yes. Number 27, Manohar Bodke, Keishav Murthy, Anya, Anya, Simbutar? Sorry, I can't read the handwriting.
And one more.
One more. Sirish Pearson.
Thank you. Go ahead, please.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Hi, my name is Keishav Murthy. I'm associated with several Indian cultural associations here in Seattle.
Just speak a little closer. There you go.
So, I am here to oppose, I repeat, to oppose Kshama Sawant's Resolution 31926. I support India's CAA. It is one of the best human rights acts passed in that region. CAA is exactly what Mahatma Gandhi, who is the world's greatest human rights champion, he, soon after independence, he proposed, like, after like, CAA. At that time, Mahatma Gandhi said, India should accept and give citizenship to any religious minorities from Pakistan. At the same time, like, all the other, like, you know, from, since that time, there are several political leaders who also, like, proposed the same thing since then. So, CAA is passed by Indian Parliament, which is the world's greatest democracy with a majority of four to one.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for waiting. Manohar? Okay. Is that you?
No, my name is Amaya.
Okay, sorry, you're next. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm a U.S. citizen and voter in District 3. I have few questions for you guys. Do you guys really have so much time to understand thousands of years of history of India, what happened, and then intellectually vote on the resolution with your full conscience? I don't, I don't think so. Solve my issues. I am a taxpayer, I want my city, Seattle, to be improved, and I want my city to be made better, invite jobs. Why are we here talking about some different biggest democracy in the world and discussing what they should do? Why should we poke our nose in there right now? And when we have similar laws, why are we voting on some, some hypocrite resolutions? I have few more things. Why are here, why are we here wasting so many taxpayers' money and talking about this resolution which is not going to produce anything? You don't have legal authority, definitely, and who gives you plural authority to talk about something which, which happens in the biggest democracy? Solve my problems at home and reject this resolution and stop wasting time.
Okay, go ahead, sir. Go ahead.
My name is Manohar. I'm here to suggest the council members strongly oppose the momentum. I have some few points to share with you. Number one, after CAA came to exist, two Pakistani Muslim women got citizenship. Haseena Bane in Gujarat and Kandiji in Punch, Jammu Kashmir. The second point I would like to point here, Pakistan's first law minister, who was a Dalit, has to flee Pakistan in six months because of, against the minor, he was against the minorities and Dalits in Pakistan. And he resigned. If CAA was there, probably he would have been lived there and a citizen in India, as a citizen of India. So I strongly support CAA, and I advise the council members to oppose. Thank you.
And because we called your name right before 3:19, go ahead, please.
I'm Sirish, Sirish. As a, as a greater Seattle resident, I oppose Ms. Shawant's Resolution of 31926. Not just this council has a locust standing, also it has completely based on narrative of anti-India forces. CAA does not have a single word of exclusion, rather it gives citizen rights to persecuted minorities in Pakistan, Bangladesh, and Afghanistan, who are waiting for justice for over 70 years. Coming to mass hysteria of CAA plus NRC, basic question to ask is, does scope of CAA extend to application to nationwide NRC? No, not at all. CAA has a cutoff date in December 2014. Claiming CAA will benefit to people excluded from nationwide NRC for, on a future date is illogical, obscure, and misguided. Ideally, discussion should be on atrocities on minorities in these countries and their motivation of the persecution. Is this resolution attempt to whitewash these atrocities? Unfortunately, victims has no say in this process. Seattle has a big problems, so council members has to spend their resource effectively.
Thank you very much, sir. I want to acknowledge that there's many people who've signed up, who didn't get a chance to testify today. So to those listening downstairs and to those in the room, we appreciate you being here. I apologize for the confusion earlier. This is my attempt to try to get as many people heard as possible, so, and to my colleagues' apologies for having to take an intermission so that we could actually hear as many people as possible. We are going to, at this point, close public comment, and we are going to move to the first item of business. I will warn folks, though, that as we move forward with today's agenda, I know that there is going to be a vote on this today, and there's going to be people who are supportive and people who are not supportive. We want to make sure people can hear the process. So if there is another disruption like the one we had earlier, I will unfortunately have to ask for the room to be cleared. Please continue to show support or disapproval in the hand motions that you have been doing, but we need to get through the rest of today's agenda. So thank you again for your understanding of where we are at, and I appreciate those who publicly testify, and to those who didn't look forward to hearing more from you as you continue to send emails and communicate. you continue to send emails and communicate with us and apologies that you did not have a chance to speak today. Please read into the item, the report from City Council. Please read item number one.
Payment to bills.
Oops, let's do payment of bills. Please read the title.
Council Bill 119737, appropriate money to pay ardent claims for the week of January 20th, 2020 through January 24th, 2020, and ordering the payment thereof.
Council colleagues, I move to pass Council Bill 119737, which is just the payment of bills.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the bill pass. Are there any comments? Seeing none, please call the role in the passage of the payment of bills.
Peterson.
Aye.
Sawat.
Aye.
Strauss.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
President Mosqueta.
Aye.
Six in favor, none opposed.
The bill passes, and the chair will sign it. Please read the report to City Council, item number one.
The report of the City Council, Jan. 1, Resolution 31926, reaffirming Seattle as a welcoming city, expressing the Seattle City Council's solidarity with Seattle's South Asian community regardless of religion and caste, and opposing India's National Register of Citizens and Citizenship Amendment Act.
Wonderful. This has been introduced by Councilmember Sawat. Councilmember Sawat, I'll ask you to do an intro to this, and I understand there's an amendment. Councilmember Sawat.
Thank you, President Mosqueta, and with your indulgence, I want to make several remarks, and I appreciate in advance my colleagues bearing up with that. And also, I wanted to just add, as you said, President Mosqueta, that Councilmember Lewis has an amended version of it, which I'm going to support. But before that, I want to make these comments, and also, if you would let me make some closing remarks after others have spoken.
Hoping that maybe we can have the majority of the comments at the end for the closing, if possible. Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. By approving this resolution, the Seattle City Council will show that the city's legislative body will stand with the widespread protest movement, courageously facing brutal police repression throughout India against the National Register of Citizens, the NRC, and the Citizenship Amendment Act, the CAA, which in tandem with each other threaten to strip away the basic rights of hundreds of millions of people. By approving this resolution, the City Council will go on the record opposing religious persecution and Islamophobia, the discrimination, scapegoating, and oppression of Muslims, poor people, and marginalized communities by the Hindu fundamentalist regime of the Bharatiya Janata Party or the BJP and Prime Minister Narendra Modi. By approving this resolution, the City Council will show that we understand that the fight against the right-wing and bigoted agenda of the BJP and of Modi is not separate from, but in fact, inextricably linked with the struggle of American progressives against the bigoted agenda of Trump and right-wing Republicans, that we cannot fight Trump's Islamophobic agenda if we also do not oppose the rise of the far-right globally. Only late last week, the Trump administration expanded the Islamophobic and racist Muslim travel ban to include six additional countries. By approving this resolution, the City Council urged the United States Congress to support legislation censuring the Indian BJP government for adopting policies that are discriminatory to Muslims, oppressed castes, women, indigenous, and LGBTQ people. By approving this resolution, the City Council will draw a historic line in the sand, recognizing the ominous similarities between the NRC and the CAA and the early Nuremberg laws enacted by the Third Reich in 1930s Germany. Recognizing the credible news reports that the Modi regime has already put many people in the state of Assam in detention centers, and that new detention centers and prisons are being built as we speak.
As a reminder to folks both in the room and to folks who are downstairs in the viewing audience, I know there's a lot of people who want to hear the details, so please continue with your hand motions. I am looking at your comments. And folks downstairs that we can't see, please also respect the folks who want to hear the comments that are happening so that we can get through this. Councilmember Sawat, please continue.
Thank you, President Mosqueta. Before the concentration camps and the death camps, the Nazis enacted the Nuremberg laws, including the Reich Citizenship Law, which redefined German citizenship to exclude Jewish people. The result was the isolation of Jewish communities, making them an increasingly easy target for scapegoating. The CAA and NRC have ominous echoes of these laws. As the Board of Directors of the Kadima Reconstructionist Jewish Community said in their statement supporting this resolution, quote, "Within living memory, policies closely parallel to these were among the first steps taken by the Nazi government of Germany in the 1930s and are now recognizable as the initial steps to the Holocaust. Policies such as these were central elements in centuries of systematic oppression of Jews, especially in Europe," unquote. On the other hand, if the City Council does not approve this resolution, it will send a chilling message that for elected officials like us, taking a stand against dangerous policies that have outlines in them of past horrors only comes when it is convenient and when there is no political courage involved. I sincerely look forward to each one of us up here on the dais taking the morally correct action today by voting yes. It is ironic for the Modi regime that while they are attempting a deeply divisive tactic, it has ended up unifying Indians and Indian immigrants in a way that I haven't seen in my own lifetime.
Please continue, Councilmember Sawat, and hand motions only, please.
I want to thank all the hundreds of Seattle's Indian immigrant community members who helped draft and push for this resolution. It has been a real movement from all parts of the Indian-American community. Hindus, Muslims, Buddhists, Sikhs, and atheists across all castes from India have come together to voice their opposition to these discriminatory and unjust laws. I specifically wanted to commend the courage and leadership of members of the Dalit community in the Seattle region, because I know how much courage it takes for people from oppressed castes to speak out, even outside India, given how entrenched the caste system is, even in Indian communities outside India. I thank Congresswoman Pramila Jayapal for using her position to speak out against the atrocities in Kashmir, and I know she will be speaking out on the CAA and NRC issue as well. I specifically thank Redmond Councilmember Varisha Khan for coming here and speaking up in favor of the resolution. I thank leaders like Anil Afzali and the Muslim Association of Puted Sound or MAPS, and many other organizations who have sent statements strongly urging that the council pass this resolution, including Amnesty International, Kadima Community, as I mentioned before, API Chaya, One America, the City of Seattle LGBTQ Commission, the Council on American Islamic Relations, and the Indian-American Islamic Council, the Group of 42 Civil and Human Rights Lawyers of South Asian Origin living in the United States who sent us a letter of support, as did Hira Singh, who sent us a letter from a group of Sikh organizations, and also Imam Fuad Muhammad of the Seattle area Al-Furqan Islamic Center. Our movement here in the Pacific Northwest also sends a message of solidarity to the young people, students, and workers all over India who are fighting back with mass ongoing demonstrations on university campuses and strike actions since December. Special mention of the courage of students at Jamia Millia Islamia and the peaceful occupation at Shaheen Bagh. On January 8, there were united protests and strikes across India against these authoritarian laws and against the devastating economic policies of the Modi government. This was the largest general strike ever in global labor history, with Bloomberg Newspaper reporting that 215 million people from banks and transport services in the cities to farmers in rural areas stopped work to participate in the strike, grinding the whole country to a halt. It is telling that virtually no one who spoke against the resolution had anything to say about the National Register of Citizens. Last year, in the Indian state of Assam, the BJP government created and updated National Register of Citizens, NRC. People were forced to prove with documentary evidence that they were Indian citizens, and if one had even a modicum of honesty, one would have to call the documentation requirements under the NRC absurd on the face of it, and only logical when you see that it seeks to fulfill the specific agenda of snatching away citizenship rights from large numbers of people. The NRC rules for documentation require that if you were born before 1971, like myself, if you have to have your birth certificate, but if you were born after 1971, like myself, I mean, in other words, if you are younger than 48 years old, you must have pre-1971 documents with your parents or grandparents' name on it, and documents proving your relationship with your parents and grandparents. According to these rules, someone like myself who was born after 1971 would actually be unable to provide the required documents. What the Modi government found through the pilot project they did in the northeastern state of Assam is that it is impossible to carry out the NRC without also rendering large numbers of Hindus stateless unless the BJP found some way to target it directly on Muslim Indians. That is the reason for the Citizenship Amendment Act, the CAA, which gives citizenship without documents to people of some religions, including Hindus, but specifically not to Muslim people. So, because I happen to have a Hindu name, even though I don't have the documents, even though I was born after 1971, I would still get my Indian citizenship under the NRC update despite not having the documentation. The BJP government claims that the CAA is a humanitarian act aimed at supporting persecuted refugees, and the NRC is nothing to worry about, but the experience in Assam proves otherwise. Also, if the CAA were truly about refugees, why is the regime building detention camps? Why doesn't it allow refugees to come to India instead of retroactively applying to people who immigrated before 2014? If the CAA allows Indian citizenship for oppressed religious minorities in three neighboring countries, why does it pointedly overlook the oppression of the Shia and Amadiya Muslim communities in those countries? If it was about supporting refugees, why does it exclude persecuted minorities in other countries in the region, such as the Rohingya people, who are predominantly Muslim, who are facing genocide in Myanmar, and the Tamils of Sri Lanka, who happen to be the largest refugee group inside India? Unlike Modi's BJP government, our movement truly supports the rights of all refugees regardless of their religions, and we do not support overt religious discrimination. I will close my comments for now, and then I'd like to come in at the end. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Lewis.
Okay, this is the first warning.
I'm going to give two warnings, because I've already given a precursor. We are going to get through this. Please continue to use your hand gestures as you have so that we can get through this. Councilmember Lewis, I understand that you have an amendment. Would you like to introduce your amendment?
Yes, thank you, Madam President Protam. I am seeking to introduce an amendment. I believe it's the only amendment on this afternoon to the resolution 31926. I believe that amendment has been circulated for council members to consider and review. It adds just one clause into Section 2 of the resolved sections to change the language, well, to rather add language for us to be calling on Congress to take action in response to our resolution rather than just sending what we're sending to the Indian government. The basis for that request is that I tend to think that when we engage in these resolutions that involve things outside of the jurisdiction of the city of Seattle, I think it's more in our wheelhouse when we are calling on our federal representatives who are charged with negotiations with other countries and international relations to take the formal action rather than us ourselves to be communicating with the Modi government. So I think that this amendment helps us to capture the same attitude as the underlying resolution, but just making sure that we are targeting it towards folks that are in a position to do something about it. I would add, and this might have actually been a good amendment for a whereas clause, that Congresswoman Jayapal has been leading on similar issues and introduced resolutions in the House on this. So I think that actually, this is a resolution that would be received probably well by Congresswoman Jayapal.
Wonderful.
That's the basis of the amendment, and I do so move it.
Okay. In advance, in advance of moving the amendment, let me go ahead and put this on our docket for official consideration. I'd like to move to adopt Resolution 31926. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the resolution be adopted. Now I'd love to entertain that motion for your amendment, if you could do that again for me.
And I do so move my amendment, Amendment 1, from Resolution 31926, to be considered.
Great. It's been moved and seconded that resolution be amended as presented in Amendment Number 1. Are there any other comments on Amendment Number 1 as outlined by Councilmember Lewis? Seeing none. I'd love to have us vote on this. All those in favor of the amendment as outlined by Councilmember Lewis, Amendment Number 1, vote aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Any objections? None. There are five ayes, as I see it, up here, and that means the motion carries, the resolution is adopted. I'd like to now see if there's any, I'm sorry, not the resolution, the amendment has adopted. Thank you very much for the parliamentarians in the room. The amendment has been adopted to the motion. So now we have in front of us the amended resolution, amended Resolution 31926. I'd like to entertain any further comments on the resolution as amended.
I have a comment.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Morales.
So last week, this body passed a resolution that offered a generic condemnation of all current and future oppression happening in the world. I oppose that resolution, even though it did acknowledge that there was oppression happening in India, and it was in reference to this resolution. As a Mexican-American woman, it's unacceptable to me not to speak out against the tragedy that is happening on our southern border against families who are desperate to find a better way of life. It is also unacceptable not to speak against the targeting on our northern border now, as we know that folks are being targeted for being Muslim as they come into this country. And I have to say that as a Jew, it was not lost on me that that resolution passed on the 75th anniversary of the liberation of Auschwitz. It's important that we stand up for human dignity, for the right of people to find refuge from violence regardless of their religion. India is a secular country, and I have to say that every comment I heard today, most of the comments I heard today, had an undertone of religious intolerance. I think we need to speak up against that. A program that detains people because of their faith, like our own shameful Muslim bans, must be rejected. As elected leaders in our community, we have an obligation to speak up against oppression regardless of where it's happening. And I do want to read a quick paragraph from a letter that we got from One America this morning.
Please go ahead.
From the Executive Director, Rich Stoltz. It says, "I understand that there has been some discussion as to whether non-binding resolutions condemning oppression in other parts of the world are worth the council's time. To the communities that One America works with, these issues are extremely close to home. Resolutions like these provide a vital opportunity to demonstrate that their communities matter and that the world is taking notice of their plight. And for this resolution, there is an obvious parallel to the laws, to these laws, and what the current US federal government is attempting to achieve in its immigration policies. I think it's important that we ensure that our own constitution in this country protects people from discrimination, especially if they are seeking refuge. And as an elected leader, I think it is our obligation to speak up when we see tragedies happening across the globe. This resolution urges India, the largest democracy in the world, to uphold its secular constitution and reject discriminatory policies, and I intend to support it."
Thank you, Councilmember Morales. Are there any other comments? Yes, Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you, Madam President Protam. So, you know, I was not prepared to vote on this resolution when it previously came before the council. You know, having done my own independent research, having accepted a considerable number of emails from folks who have been providing feedback on this from the community, you know, I am prepared today to vote in favor of this resolution as it has been amended. Wow, you know, it sounds like I'm probably not going to get elected to the lock subha, but I got to say that in looking into the issue more and looking into it more in depth, a lot of organizations that I'm very favorably disposed to have reached similar conclusions on the CAA is what the resolution has adopted. The Economist, of which I follow the editorials very closely to, has editorialized and opined against the CAA. You know, I did not run for Seattle City Council to pass resolutions regarding international matters. I do not intend in my own practice here on the dais probably to propose resolutions like this, but the question hasn't been posed to me. The people of District 7 did send me here to vote and offer a position when they do come before me. There is no other option for me than to support this resolution and call the CAA what it is. I will therefore be voting in favor of the resolution today, and I thank you, Councilmember Sawat, for bringing this forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewis. Any additional comments? Are there any additional comments? Councilmember Sawat, I believe you would like to close us out. I will also just go ahead and acknowledge that it has been important, from my perspective as an elected official, to make sure that we are raising issues that are of significance both here at home, nationally, and internationally. And having both been elected for the last two years and also previous to that, being an advocate for human rights and labor standards, working families, it is important when people take up resolutions, even if it is not within
take up resolutions, even if it is not within the confines of the borders of the municipality that's being considered. We have had cities, states, Congress take up resolutions condemning injustice at many different levels, and I would welcome any country who wants to raise questions, condemn U.S. policies of incarcerating children, of separating families, of enacting wars of aggression, of pursuing oppression and occupation in countries around the world. I welcome that type of criticism when it is in our country, and I think that it is important to raise concerns when we see injustice in other countries or in other areas. Even here in Seattle, our words have an important impact across the globe and also locally. I do want to acknowledge many of the organizations that you've mentioned, and also say to folks who both testified today and who have expressed concern, we did receive your messages, and I know many of you have been waiting for a long time to speak. We've also heard from a number of the organizations that Councilmember Sawant mentioned, including individuals who were not able to speak, who I know are downstairs. I want to say that I understand that you have been waiting a long time to speak, both the folks in this room that didn't get to speak and downstairs, and I really do appreciate you coming forward. This is something that I think Councilmember Lewis referenced, that Congressional Woman Jayapal has been very clear to outline her concerns, and I would encourage folks to look at the Washington Post opinion piece that was published on December 23rd, where she articulates the concerns around the CAA and the NRC. So I think that this is something that is not an individual pushing a certain resolution. This is a community effort that we have heard from, and also at the national level, we know that there are many people that have raised this issue. I will be in support of this resolution. I look forward to you closing us out, and then we will move to a vote.
Thank you, President Musketa, especially for recognizing that this is not something that's coming from an individual, but this has been a tremendous community effort. And I also greatly appreciate the powerful comments from yourself and from Councilmembers Morales and Lewis. And I hope that this resolution's passage will provide inspiration for other legislative bodies like city councils and state legislatures to do the same as well. And I also wanted to add that such resolutions, as important as they are, will not be sufficient to defeat the Modi and BJP and Trump agenda. You know, we are facing similar questions, as you all have echoed, about how do we defeat Trump? There are lots of similarities. Trump and Modi even held an odious joint rally last year in Texas called Howdy Modi. Both Modi and Trump won their election not because their xenophobia and Islamophobia have majority support in either country, but because of the complete failure of the political establishment to address the needs of ordinary people. People who hate the BJP voted for them in the elections last year.
This is the third and final warning. This is the third and final warning.
Council Pro Tem, I would support you clearing the chamber.
Go ahead, Councilmember. Councilmember Sawant, please continue.
People who hated the BJP actually ended up voting for them in the elections last year because they saw no alternative after...
All right. Do you want to continue?
After decades of open corruption...
All right. The Chair has asked the meeting to come to order, and order has not been resolved. If you do not resolve this and come to order, the room will be cleared. I know folks want to hear this. The room will be cleared, or individuals will be asked to leave. Is there security present? Okay, Councilmember, please continue. Security guards, I will ask that the individuals who are yelling, please be removed from the room. If they do quiet, they are welcome to stay.
People who hate the BJP ended up voting for them in the elections last year because they saw no alternative. After decades of open corruption, privatizations, and neoliberalism by the Indian National Congress Party...
It's okay, continue. You can wait. No, you don't have to clear the room. I think they're leaving on their own.
I wish people could get this excited about...
Sir, you don't mind decorum?
And that people are taking their own initiative to leave. Thank you for... Thank you very much.
Where's your decorum?
We understand that some folks have decided to leave. They are welcome to leave. Folks who are willing and interested in hearing the rest of the comments are welcome to stay. Those who are being disruptive, we appreciate them walking out on their own accord, but we need to continue with this. We have about three more minutes until we have to get to this last item, Councilmember Sawant. So if you want to wrap us up, that would be appreciated. Security. Okay. At this point, we greatly appreciate those who have stayed in the audience, for the viewing audience. Some individuals have chosen to leave, so we are going to go ahead and ask security to let the folks who are still being disruptive get out of the room. Great. Council colleagues, the sponsor of the resolution has asked that we go ahead and consider the resolution in front of us. At this point, I'd like to ask if there are any further comments. Seeing none. All those in favor... All of those... All of those in favor of adoption of the resolution as amended, please vote aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Clerk Ison, no abstentions and no opposition. There was five votes in favor. The motion carries. The resolution as adopted and as amended is adopted, and the Chair will sign it. Still have some more items on our agenda. We are going to go to Items 3 through 7. Items 3 through 7. I know, I was going to skip it. Can I skip it? Oh, I can't skip it. Okay, great. We have a few more items on our agenda. I'd like to quickly do Item Number 2, because I understand there's been a change in the agenda that's been suggested. Before we do that, Report of the Sustainability and Renters' Rights Committee, please read the report. Okay. Oh, got it. Let's do that. Because we have a hard time deadline for our council colleague who needs to leave at 4:00, I would like to move that we hold Item 2 until after consideration of Items 3 through 7, and we will come back to Item 2 at that time. Council colleagues, I'd like to entertain Items 3 through 7. Report of the Public Safety and Human Services Committee, please read the Items 3 through 7 into the agenda.
The Report of the Public Safety and Human Services Committee, Agenda Items 3 through 7, Appointments 1533 through 1537, Reappointment of Tara Henrickson as Member, Seattle Fire Code Advisory Board for Term to August 31st, 2021, Reappointments of Fritz Chess, Brad Middleton, and Hugo Sotelo as Member, Seattle Fire Code Advisory Board for Term to May 31st, 2022, and a reappointment of Kurt Howell Lustig as Member, Seattle Fire Code Advisory Board for Term to December 31st, 2022. The committee recommends that these appointments be confirmed.
Wonderful, thank you. Councilmember Lewis, would you like to speak to these appointments?
Yes, thank you, Madam President, Pro Tem. As folks are aware, Councilmember Herbold is not here to join us today. The Vice Chair of that committee, Councilmember Gonzalez, is also absent. So Councilmember Herbold asks that, as a member of the committee, I fill in on this matter today. I'm more than happy to. You know, as someone who, prior to serving on the Seattle City Council, served on the Seattle Human Rights Commission, the folks that serve on our boards and commissions are the lifeblood of civic service in the city, and I'm really proud to formally move for Items 3 through 7 the appointments and reappointments of Tara Henrickson, Fritz Chess, Kurt Howell Lustig, Brad Middleton, and Hugo Sotelo. As Councilmember Peterson and Morales can also attest, we heard presentations regarding their service at the committee meeting, and it's really good to know that we've got such good folks who are on this really important advisory board. So I would just ask that we confirm them and would move the appointments.
Wonderful. Any additional comments? Great. It's been moved that we confirm the nominees in Items 3 through 7. Those in favor of confirming Appointments 1533 through 1537, please vote aye and raise your hand. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Wonderful. Madam Clerk, from up here, I see six votes for aye. The motion carries, and the appointments are confirmed. Thank you, Councilmember. Let's go back to Item Number 2. Report of the Sustainability and Renters' Rights Committee, please read the report into the record.
The Report of the Sustainability and Renters' Rights Committee, Agenda Item 2, Council Bill 119726, relating to Termination of Residential Rental Tenancies, prohibiting Evictions in Winter Months and Amending Section 22.206.160 of Seattle Mississippi Code. The committee recommends that the bill passes amended.
Wonderful. Councilmember Strauss.
Councilmember Pro Tem, I move to hold Council Bill 119726 until February 10th, 2020.
It has been moved. I will second that. To... May I second that? Okay, great. It's been moved and seconded that we hold the bill until February 10th, 2020. Are there any additional comments? Nope, looks like...
Can I?
Yes, please, Councilmember Morales.
Ask why. I'd be interested in voting. I think, I feel like we've discussed this bill, and are there additional amendments that are forthcoming that we need to anticipate?
Thank you, Councilmember Morales. I see heads nodding this way. Councilmember Strauss?
Happy to... Councilmember, I myself have a number of amendments to bring forward, and we'll be sharing those with your office, Councilmember Sawant, shortly, and I believe that this bill has a little bit more work to have accomplished before it's ready for full counsel.
Councilmember Sawant.
I'll just quickly add that we, in response to Councilmember Morales's very apt question that we do, we did have a very energetic discussion and thorough discussion in the Sustainability and Renters' Rights Committee on January 23rd, and in fact, the legislation that was discussed was itself an amended version based on the feedback we had already received from tenant rights advocates and also small landlords. I am happy to look at amendments that are forthcoming, but I would really urge the council offices to send us the amendments as soon as possible so that we have time to review them.
Wonderful, and appreciate the dialogue this morning as well at council briefing. It sounds like this is a friendly request to hold, and appreciate the council colleagues working together on this, and appreciate the question from Councilmember Morales, as we're all eager to see the language that's being worked up, and I know the community is as well. Without any additional hands that I see requesting to comment, it's been moved and seconded to hold the bill until February 10th, 2020. Seeing no additional comments, all those in favor of holding the bill, please vote aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Madam Clerk, it appears that there's six votes in favor of holding the bill until February 10th, 2020. The motion carries, and the Council Bill 119726 will be held until that time. Council colleagues, thank you so much for your indulgence. This is my first day back from family leave, and acting as President Pro Tem, appreciate your working with me to get through this full agenda. Before we wrap up, before we wrap up, council colleagues, are there any more, is there any more business to come before the council?
Yes, for the good of the order, I have a proclamation proclaiming International Clash Day for this February 7th, 2020, and if we could have the council members sign this...
Absolutely.
That would be wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Strauss, for your proclamation. We look forward to signing that, and that will be circulated. Council colleagues, sorry for any rough start to the year. I'm happy to be back and look forward to working with all of you as we take on more important issues this year. With that, today's full counsel is adjourned.